Public comments. It's a period for about 15 minutes and please limit your comments to three minutes. So other members of the public may have an opportunity to speak if you are here for public comments. And you're online, please either raise your hand or if you're in the room, please come up to the microphone of the front here. So anyone in the room for public comments? I believe there is somebody online. Is that Dan?
Yes.
Hi.
Hi, I just want to make a quick announcement to Chapterland owners that we have not forgotten to send out their Chapterland applications. This year, the legislature changed the due date from October 1st to December 1st, so we're holding off mailing out the applications until the beginning to middle of next month.
Okay, thank you. So anyone else here for public comments? All right. Now just come on right up to that microphone there. It won't sound speakers and it's mostly for those online.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. A few of us are here today to talk about the problems we're having with the Hadley Young Men's Club. And I know that's on the agenda, so I didn't know where this fell in now or after. But you know, there's, there's a few things that we're all concerned about. One is they've been violating their liquor license for years. Now it's finally come to a head. Their, their sound variance is also been violated. They're exceeding their decimal points from 50 to 92. The day they had that country in the country. But besides liquor license, and they've been warned and warned and warned. I have five or six letters coming from Carolyn Brennan and also from Jennifer James. Making them aware, making a goalware that they continue to violate our liquor license. But there doesn't seem to be any end to it. On, on August 13th, I even went to the Young Men's Club. And I took pictures. I took pictures of all of them sitting on the deck, which they've been warned several times. You cannot drink on the deck. They got so many letters. I don't know what will happen for them to understand that they are not following the law. But one of my other reasons, and I think is more important. If we think for a while about these events where students get bussed in. And then when it's time for the students to go home, a lot of them choose not to take the bus. They choose to walk home. And people up and down East Street, Rocky Hill Road have told me the students are urinating on their lawns. They're, they're throwing up on their lawns. They're throwing trash on their lawns. And they're even passed out on their lawns. Let's take for a minute that there's a fatality after one of these events. And that's really what's driving me here. If there were to be a fatality, the Young Men's Club will be sued, obviously. But the lawyers will find out they don't have any permits for this. They don't have any license for insurance because they have no permits. That's going to fall on the town of Hattie. You guys. You guys keep allowing the Young Men's Club to violate their liquor license. As simple as that sounds, could be very dangerous one of these days. And I just want to bring that to everyone's attention. Because that is one of the driving forces that's behind me. I do not want my taxes to be increased to fund some multi-million dollar lawsuit. When one of these students is injured after one of these events at the Young Men's Club because they carry no liability. And just as it happens, just like they keep throwing everybody under the bus, that's why they can keep drinking on the deck. They're going to throw the town of Hattie under the bus and say, you guys have allowed us to do this for years. It's your fault. That's going to be a good court case. And I'm here trying to remind all the people, especially the people of Hadley to join us and say enough is enough. If, if bars in Amherst or North Hampton or Springfield violated their liquor license as many times as the Young Men's Club has violated their liquor license, their license would, they would have been fined. And their license would have been revoked or withdrawn for a period of time. There has been no action taken to the Young Men's Club other than writing letters which they simply ignore. Simply ignore. July 5th of your last board meeting, Molly asked their legal counsel directly, will you be in complete compliance between now and November 1st? He answered, and I quote, yes, we'll be in full compliance. Not many days after that, August, the letters started going out. You're violating, you're on the deck. You're doing all this, so you can't take a word from anybody, even their lawyers. Says we will be in compliance, full compliance by November 1st. First up till November 1st, and that has not happened. So I'm asking the board and the town administrator to take whatever action you feel right. But keep in mind, you are representing the town of Hadley. And should some incident occur, you are going to be faced with some liability insurance that the town is not going to be very happy with. Thank you. I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Could you just state for the record your address, please?
23 Chmur Road, Hadley.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment.
Thanks. We can't talk about it right now because it is a agenda item. But if you have anything further, when we get down to that, you're welcome to come and speak again.
Where to come in, but under comments, I felt that's a place I can tell you our feelings and I can tell you what's, what's coming down the road and tomorrow. It's happening tomorrow. Tomorrow from 2:00 to 9:00, they're having a, a summer endless summer event. They're bussing kids from UMass. They've been selling tickets for two months and I've been telling people around here, this is going on. And what they advertise on their website? Two, two bars, two special bars, DJs, vendors. Kind of vendors. Do they have a permit to sell food and vendor truckle? The last time they had one of these summer events. Local bars like an Amherst, the Hangar. They came to the club with a lot of other bars under this vendor category and had margarita contests. What bar could make the best margaritas? Now considering too, they advertise this to be 18 plus. You're going to have 18, 19, and 20. Three years worth of rats kids, college kids, they're going to come here. Pay $10 for what if they can't drink, play hopscotch? No, they're coming here to drink. I would like to go tomorrow or someone go with me tomorrow and see who's checking IDs. I guarantee you that Treswood Softwood Juniors are not 21. So why would they come and pay $10 and spend a whole afternoon here? It can't be just for hopscotch.
Can you save it Nick till we get it on the agenda so we can talk to you about it rather than you just keep going? Yeah, I think that would be better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so anyone else for public comments? Okay. So anyone online?
There is no one else online.
So I know that I didn't say this when we came back into open session, but here we have Molly Joyce, myself and Randy. And Jane Evans Smith is on the line. She's doing via Zoom today. So for the consent agenda, we have warrants PR 2403, AP 2408, AP 2408S, AP 2407, AP 2407S. Historical Commission resignation, Judy Stone. Police Department resignation, James Ryan. Public Safety Dispatch resignation, Elijah Edmonds. Common particular Maple Farms Incorporated doing business as Maple Farms Food. This is contingent upon building fire and Board of Health approval. I'm getting there. And then there is one that is currently on the consent agenda that we will be pulling for discussion. And that's the one day liquor license for top of campus on this coming Saturday.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda with that one item removed.
Second.
Motion by Molly, second by Randy, roll call of discussion. We didn't.
You knew that some of the neighbor conflict are here, don't have any questions still.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Maple Farms?
Nobody wanted to pull it out, so I'm assuming no.
Okay.
Love your place.
As long as you have been inspected.
Yeah. So let's go ahead and vote on.
It says to remove the one day.
Yeah. I did. Yep. So I removed that one. So let's do a roll call vote for the what we have.
Roll call vote, Keegan.
Yes.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Isner.
Yes.
And Nevinson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so for the discussion on the, the one day liquor license, we do ask that it is contingent and required for them to reach out to schedule with Mike.
Fire chief.
The fire chief. Sorry. It's hard having Mike and Mike. You guys can't.
And if they don't?
No, it's not. It doesn't matter, Joyce. It's, it's contingent upon. They have to do it. So. So is that, are you making a motion, Amy? Or I'll, so how's that?
So we yeah, so we will approve it.
A motion to approve.
Motion to approve contingent upon fire inspection from our fire. Yeah, prior, prior to the event and consumption or sale of alcohol.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Yes.
Nevinson. Thank you.
Okay.
Amy, can I just outline some changes?
Yes.
So a couple of things I would ask respectfully that do have the part here who is on vacation, Mary Carver here. If we could consider moving the abatement up, which would be 6.2 before appointments. Appointments, if you're okay with that, Troy, our HR director, he's on, but has, does not have a strong voice. He's been very ill. So he's, if we could wait to address that next, at the next select board meeting, we'd be taking that off.
But appointments?
Yeah.
The appointments, yes. And then Al Gunwin, 5.4. Linda is on vacation, so she, her and I would be doing that together and I just forgot that she was on vacation. So we'll have to, that's a question about a project to look at our funding for.
Okay, so we will not do 5.1 today. We'll move that to the next select board meeting. And then are we good for 5.2 board and committee?
Do 6.2.
Oh, you want to do 6.2 first?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right.
Sue.
Are you on mute? I'm sorry.
I was. Yeah, I was. Of course I was. So this abatement is purely administrative. 221 Hockenham is a meter that is placed at Hockenham Cemetery every year. A meter changeout was done. And the changeout form was sent to Kim. And once you enter a changeout, it takes it from inactive to active. The reason we have a meter there is so that the water department can keep track of any water that goes through the meter so that our unaccounted water for DEP isn't huge. We have never charged for any of the cemeteries for water. So this is purely administrative.
Okay, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Molly, second by Joyce. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote.
Keegan. Yes.
Tugler.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Yes.
Nevinson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Then we'll go back up to old business 5.2 board and committee appointments.
Now Chair, I ask that you keep the Constitution proclamation. They're going to come into the boards and committees. These are several people. It's going to take just a bit of time.
Okay, so let's. All right, 5.3 Constitution Week proclamation. So we are going to proclaim the week of September 17th as Constitution Week. As we had previously discussed and voted on in the prior meeting. Is Betty Allen here?
Yeah.
Hi.
Donna Hill.
Yes, sorry.
It's Cindy Watson.
Hello. All right. So do you want me to read the proclamation? Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Town of Hadley by the Select Board Proclamation 2023. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law and whereas September 17th, 2023 marks the 236th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. Whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Hadley and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals, the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. Given the sixth day of September in the year 2023. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Yeah.
Thank you for having support.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Many a car had hit that.
Oh, yes, on that corner.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. All right. So 5.2 board and committee appointments. Okay. So ambulance oversight committee.
So what is the purpose of this? Are we, are we are going to appoint?
I think we're appointing the vacancies, right?
We started your new procedure of inviting new interest departments to come and meet with y'all before you appointed them to the committee. So we have invited everyone here tonight. There are a couple that I'm going to ask you to postpone due to scheduling conflicts. I'm going to ask for Adam for calls for the Bylaw Review Committee. He would like to come on the 20th.
Okay.
And for Iris Tang to come on the 20th as well. She's out of town.
For CBA, okay.
But I believe everyone else feels in presence.
Now are there? So for the committees with multiple applicants, are there, there are some that don't have all the spots, right?
Right. So for ambulance oversight committee, right now you have one member who's available or one position open at a meeting and we're going to be an alternate that you're going to need to alternate in there. So that would be my recommendation is that we talk to them and to Walter Jennings and Susan Glasky, both who are here. And then point one is the member and then another as the alternate. And then do you want me to just discuss all of them real quick or just do, you want to go committee by committee?
Let's just take one at a time. I'll do one at a time.
So ambulance oversight committee.
Okay.
Walter, could you come up and join us at the table?
So Walter, would you like to tell us what's the nature of your interest in being on the ambulance oversight committee?
My interest is to give something back to the community. I live on East Street. I have a very strong background in emergency management, fire, police, more fires than police, but they are my neighbors. And if there's anything I could do to help them, that's why I'm here, just to be a part of it and help and give back to the community.
Thank you. And we have Susan.
Same question for you, Sue. Sure. Actually Molly and I had a conversation a while back. I'm very happy to be an alternate on this committee. My interest is I expect that the ambulance will become an important revenue stream in town. And given the upcoming capital requests that will come from public safety, I'd like to be part of the team that makes that decision.
Okay, so for the both of you, do you know when they meet, when they, when they have meetings typically? And my, my question is, is it going to be easy enough for both or either of you to get to these meetings?
Yes.
I do not know when the meetings are personally.
Yeah, we don't have a set schedule for these meetings. They tend to be a little bit, you know, they can be ad hoc, but basically we try to meet once a quarter. We meet in the evenings at the Public Safety Complex. We've done them via Zoom in the past, but you know, typically we're trying to meet in person at this point. And usually the meetings start around 6 o'clock. Sometimes it can be, you know, we, we try to be flexible and work with people's schedules, but usually it's about 6 to 7:30 or something like that.
6:00 PM next door to my house is very doable.
I see you got to come all the way from Plainfield every day.
Four in the winter, we get out at two, so it's no big deal for me to be next door at 6:00 PM.
So. All right. Well, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Walter Jennings to the vacancy currently on the ambulance oversight committee and welcome Sue Glawatsky as alternate.
Second.
All right, motion by Molly, seconded by Randy. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote, Keegan.
Yes.
Tugler.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Isner.
Yes.
And Nevinson.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, Bylaw Review Committee.
So he's not here.
Oh, he's not here.
Thank you, Walter.
Watch your email, Walter. There's one coming up.
So then because Adam's not available, then we probably shouldn't do the committee preservation as well, CPC.
So Breonna is here.
We can, we can, we can appoint her and fold off on him.
Oh.
In, in different committees.
Okay.
So.
I see.
I just want to give you a full picture of everybody. So if you want to hold on that, I'm sure Breonna will come back if needed.
Okay.
Or can't she?
But. How many open patients are there? One, okay.
Historic. That's historical. She, she, Breonna's interested in too. I think. Want to move to historical?
Okay. And how many are available in historical?
We advertised for two people, but with Judy Stone's resignation tonight that she pre-openings. And I will say for all of these, everybody who submitted a letter of interest, we gave them the letter for them to apply to. And then I encouraged them all to reach out to the Chair of the Chair telling them about their issues. And so Breonna is here and Mary Carney is here. No, I was, Irene.
Yep.
And Mary Carney was here. I got, I'm too busy. So they are all here from.
And Diana's on that.
Yeah. And then, oh, Emma's not here. Okay.
So I guess we need to talk to Diana and see which, if she's got any.
Who's this one? Irene.
Correct. Who wants to go first? Here by the mic, so I can go. Hi, I'm Breonna Quinn. I grew up in the area, but recently moved back after about 15 years from Los Angeles. And I have two young kids who now live here, so we have a very vested interest in settling down here and planting roots. And so I would like to volunteer to help maintain and preserve at least wrenches to be as best I can.
Thank you. Next.
I'm Mary Carney. Some of you. I have also returned to the area in the last, probably during COVID, I moved back from a long time in DC. And I've always been interested in history and I live in a super old house. Going to learn more about history as I try to keep that thing standing. And I just really am interested in learning more about the town history, preserving it and making sure everyone has a chance to learn about it and celebrate it. It's a very interesting campaign.
Thank you.
Hi, Irene.
I'm Irene Costello and I took Hadley about 18 months ago, so I'm relatively new in the town. And I moved from the Boston area. I have a history background and what I have learned about Hadley and again, its rich cultural history. It actually just blew my mind, actually. Then because I live on the West Street Common and I just renovated my house, very old house. So I just, I, the more I am here, the, the more I love learning about Hadley and would love to have an opportunity to become more active in the community.
And how many of you have read the history of Hadley?
Haven't I started it?
Hopkins Academy requirement. My mom was my history teacher, so I get it.
She wrote the Angel of Albert.
Really?
Act of Oblivion.
All right.
It's a page turn.
I used to print to the book that
History of Hadley?
No, the, the one that Mary Lou Cutter.
Yeah, it was Cutter's.
The, the Witch of Hadley?
No, she wrote the history of Hadley in, in a form that the children could understand. Actually, I have the copy at home. It was signed to my children.
That might be for like Gen Z. We had the very old style ones.
She was my fourth grade. Yeah, my kids are up to it. But yeah, that was a very, it's very easy read, you know, the history of Hadley.
So I know Diana's here. Right? I thought Diana West was here.
She is. She's on the left there. You can't. She's out in the woods.
I can't read the glare. I can't read the screen. Did you want him to say anything, Diana?
Diana West, 164 South Maple Street. I'll just say that I would be honored to have any of these amazing women join us on the commission. I know it's a tough decision as four people have applied and we have three open spots. And I hope whoever doesn't get selected will consider us in the future as there are a few of us who've served on the commission for a number of years now and probably I think some of us are hoping to complete the projects you've started and eventually rotate off. So I'm just looking for good dedication and hoping that we can finish our current projects and move on to new projects. And I've already seen dedication from the people in front of you right now. And I would be happy with any choice that was made. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm just thinking, I mean, I know Emma's not here tonight. But or excuse me, dragon. Or excuse me, dragon, um. But they're also on other, other, you know, and so. I mean. Be great, you know?
Get some new blood.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I'm so excited to see people that aren't always here.
I'm gonna make a motion that all three of you get elected to the historical commission.
Yep, I'll second.
Thank you for coming out tonight. Appreciate it. Nice to meet you.
Is there any, is there any further discussion? Motioned by, um, Molly, seconded by Joyce. Roll call vote.
Roll call vote. Keegan?
Yes.
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Isner?
Yes.
And then Smith.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Diana.
This might be the first time we're filled up, so this is very exciting.
Great.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, and I think.
All I wanted to ask is.
Do we have, is Crystal available?
Crystal actually was, is actually in the meeting that's happening in other rooms right now.
Okay.
Because she serves, or it's C D I, isn't it? She's actually in the meeting right now, who then. She was thinking earlier in the evening.
Uh huh.
Um, what I can say is that Crystal also serves on.
Housing and Economic Development.
Committee.
Yep.
And she's met, um, Mark and Tricia. Uh, Mark Dunn is the chair of the C D I and Tricia Reslyer is the clerk of the C D I. She's met with them, um. And she is very enthusiastic to join. They did, and they said the same.
Okay.
So move.
Yeah, yeah, it's fine. Uh, motion by Molly, seconded by Joyce. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote. Keegan?
Yes.
Tendler?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Or Isner?
Yes.
And then Smith.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
And paying what kind of wait till the.
And the twenty. And it was, it was really nice to see all the people, uh, sending in emails as soon as y'all announced it and put it out there.
Uh huh.
Yeah, we got people, you know, and the interest. Granted, I sent them to the chairs and. He all talked to the chairs and came back to us. I thought that was really great things.
Excellent. All right, um, Old Business five point five, Young Men's Club.
Okay, I've gone Quinn.
That one, we're, they're, yeah, they're holding up on that one for now. It's yes, sorry, Young Men's Club, we're here, five point five.
Okay, so, um, we, a- a- as it was mentioned earlier, we have received pictures, um. Um, alcohol consumed on the recently completed deck of the Young Men's Club. Um, so Carolyn and myself have reached out. Which is, which I want to be very clear, is not part of their licensed premise. It is not included in it. Um, it was just recently completed and it just recently received a certificate of occupancy. Uh, for the deck. Uh, so Carolyn and I reached out to the A B C C. But together we spoke to the Assistant Executive Director, Ryan Millville. Um, and he, um, explained a couple of things and had some suggestions on how to move forward with this. The first is that pictures from the public are not necessarily the most useful or visible as you're moving forward to public carries. And that it's best for it to come for your alcohol enforcement laws. Um, which led to the discussion of the fact that the town county has not pointed an alcohol enforcement. So, um, he also recommended that we tighten the description of their premise. And, um, and suggested that we reach out to the local council to help with that. Uh, appointing of the officer. Um, so then we reached out to Lisa Mead. And, uh, from me, Talia and Costa, our town council, uh, and explained to her what we, you know, this is what we have from. Uh, the A B C C, we have these pictures. She said again that the pictures are not. Readily most useful pictures, even though they are very clear that there are people who are alcoholing from the deck. Um, she did recommend that town have, appoint an alcohol enforcement officer. The alcohol enforcement officers. Come from police department. So, um, she does recommend that we appoint a police officer as the alcohol enforcement officer. And, um, that officer, what that officer is allowed to do is that officer is allowed to enter the premise on your behalf. Behes, uh, without a warrant, they're able to take pictures, they're able to cite. Any violations that they see and they're able to bring them back to y'all. Uh, so what we need to know is what your pleasure is. Would you like to appoint an alcohol enforcement officer? And if y'all would like to, then we'll return to, uh, we'll, we'll meet with Chief Mason. Figure out who that would be and we'll have, um, town council help with the, and the duties of them.
What other job duties would the town enforcement police officer have besides just policing the Young Men's Club?
The alcohol enforcement.
It's a town, it's for anything that holds liquor license.
It would be for any, any place that we would want them to go into. If, if we heard or, or the chief heard. That, um, I'm not gonna say any business to say, because I don't wanna say any businesses being a bad actor, but if we heard. The location was selling to minors, then they could go in that way, or if, uh, someone's observing. If that's what they're doing.
Don't we, don't we already do that, Mike? No?
And, and.
You need a certification from the A B C C and some training to, to do this job. Just be another duty for, uh, psych ops. You're essentially transferring your authority to that person who has that certain.
And that wouldn't be their only job, correct? It would just be part of their. Yeah, okay.
And so like what? What if it's one person? What would they have?
Well.
Like ticket?
We will be doing this a lot.
So Ryan Noble said that, um, if this is something that we do forthwith. That connecting the chief with, um, their head investigator and that he will help with that, maybe not forward. Um, and, uh. So that, that's what we would have to do to, to have the alcohol enforcement office.
So I think originally. Um, correctly, but from what I understand, um. The club was not aware that the deck, because it was on the property. And attached to the Young Men's Club itself was out of realm of their licensure.
I think there was a very, if I may, if there's a very easy way to correct that and I was. To call, but also every inspector did inform them as he was doing their, um, application for the deck. That it was not part of their premise and that they altered their premise and so they need to get an alteration of premise. So to the, to this end, also I have spoken, I emailed their attorney, Tom Reedy. Um, and he stated that, uh, Rich Downey. Did not, that believed that deck was included in the license and did not realize it, but now that they know, they will not use it again for alcohol.
When was this email delivered?
This morning.
Okay.
Or this afternoon.
Okay.
Um, so.
Can they eat on the deck?
Oh, yeah, you can. That's not alcohol.
It's, it, the alcohol is what this is about. This is about already alcohol being consumed. And you have, yes, so yes, they can have the alcohol back. But, um.
Why don't they just?
Okay, so let's get back to the, the issues at hand here. I would like to make a motion. To appoint an alcohol enforcement officer.
Or multiple.
Speak to Mike on that about him.
Yeah, so that's not, that appointment specifically isn't on the agenda.
Yeah.
So I think we know moving forward that we'll talk with Mike first and we'll.
Okay.
Between you guys, yeah.
Okay.
Is there a cost associated? You said there's certification, like how long does it take?
I don't know much about it. I wanna say it's just some training and, and certification to. To give you an authority that A B C C officers have as well as the, the select boards.
So let's give Mike another duty to check into that, to see what it would take to.
So I, I have a question. Would it?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, Jane. Just wait a minute, Jane. Um, to have you look into the A B C and see what it takes.
Yeah.
The cost, if it's anything to the town for, for us to do this.
Sure.
I'm sure it's not gonna be, I think it would be Jennifer, but.
You know, he, it's his, it's his cost for the department.
Well, something that we'll have to look at together is what I was thinking is that Carolyn and Mike would work together. And very.
Sure, it's manageable.
Yeah. So like, would you be issuing tickets to people, like fines, like what, what?
I don't really know exactly how, um, how the enforcement of a violation.
Uh huh.
It can happen. I, I do know that there's probably stepped up questions about it. It's probably something similar to Jennifer knows. Something similar to like.
Sorry.
Bylaw violation where you can issue a file or whatever.
Well, I just mean like, we don't have like a, like specific enforcement officer. And then now we're getting one for a, a specific alcohol thing. Yeah.
So after we have the conversation with Mike, then we need to know if y'all would like rules and regulations. Such as y'all would put them in force, policies, procedures and say, if you're caught drinking to a minor, we will suspend your license for this many days. If you're caught violating your license, drag you off premise or, or not on your correct premise, we suspend your license for this many days. And so we need to know, uh, are those things that you're interested in us exploring further and bringing to y'all as a select board? Are these steps you want? Do you want to, do you want us to explore with Chief Mason, having alcohol enforcement officer? Do you want to explore the union rules and regu- regulations?
Yeah, I would say, yes, I mean, I can't.
But you also have a meeting next week with, uh, Attorney Reedy. And the club to discuss their licensing, correct?
They are bringing an application to amend their license to me. I'm reviewing it with them as I do with all applicants of any liquor license, anything they wanna change. You bring it in, we review it. I make sure that you fill out the entire boxes and everything, all the information is correct. And then I accept it if it is. And then I bring it to y'all and I take it to Chief Mason and the technical and the building inspector. I get everybody's opinions and I bring all, a whole packet to y'all. And y'all make the decision. I have no authority. I have the ability to make sure. That everything's at work and I've got all the information to leave bringing it to you. So I'm really, if we're not, yes, we are meeting, but it's a make sure the paperwork is correct and that they're. They're moving forward in the process to use in a correct way.
Okay.
So I'm not, I'm not making any recommendations or judgment about where their alcohol is being consumed.
I also think that it would be important for us, um, to note that. We are going to have officers available or trained as enforcers, but. That this isn't necessarily a witch hunt and we're not, um. You know, it, just so nobody claims entrapment. Per se, kind of type of thing that we're doing this because it's something that we should have done a long time ago anyway. And that this just happened to be the catalyst for us moving in this direction, um, and that. This isn't, they're not gonna be sitting outside the Young Men's Club every day. It's gonna be for anybody in all alcohol consumption and Hadley.
And, and it seemed to me when you brought up the, the alcohol enforcement officer position. Telling Mr. Watoitz that his pictures were no good because he's of the general public, then my thought was, okay, we have this person who can take pictures. That, that are legitimized and then potentially, I don't know, that we wanna give this person the authority to. Grant, you know, give fines or, or penalties. They bring their information back to the board and then the board decides.
Correct, so you're empowering officer to take pictures and go to places. And then they can issue a citation telling them that they have to come back to you, but for any matter to be acted on impacting a licensed establishment. Y'all have to hold a public hearing. Due notice must be given to both the public and the licensee. There, there, there's steps and procedures you have to follow the way, all the way through. So it's not that, uh, Chief Mason would pop by. Um, an establishment town and they're like, oh, you're drinking outside and you're not allowed to. You're shut down.
Uh huh.
Here's your citation. Jennifer will be in touch to schedule your public hearing. Have a good day.
Yeah, but they can respond to reports, just like they would anything else, right?
Uh huh, okay.
I have a question. So my question is, it, shouldn't there be two people trained to do this because of illness and vacations?
More than two.
Yeah, I think that, that would be up for determination later.
To Amy's point.
See what it takes when you look into it.
Yeah, I mean, we're, they're struggling just to, just to fill shifts. We're down laying five officers right now. I, you know, like, we're not gonna be able to sit. Outside every place that serves, so people should probably be trained to do this.
Uh huh.
If that's what you want.
Do we need a motion to authorize that or you're saying we're gonna take that on another agenda item in the future?
It wasn't, we can't do that today, yeah.
On this agenda.
Consensus, I can do the steps and then, um, we'll add it to, we'll have a meeting, we'll bring it to the next agenda on September twentieth. Uh, this was an informative thing because the pictures were brought to us and it is against, um, it is not licensed right now for that.
Okay, so if we're close to being done with the enforcement, I, another question related to the Young Men's Club side of.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, so I think, were we asking for the date specifically in November because that's when they have to re-up their license?
No, um, but y'all did when you, when you continued the public hearing, you had the date.
Uh huh.
That is the date y'all chose. Their license and their inspections must be completed by November thirtieth. I have their paperwork complete for the new year.
Okay. I, we can, can I talk about that now or no? No, not really on agenda, okay.
Agenda and we were discussing Young Men's Club and the licensed premises.
Uh huh.
So I think I can say, you know, I think I can say that that comes up. That, that is a normal thing. It comes up on. That's what y'all chose to do November first, but the licenses.
Okay.
Yeah, I apologize. I didn't hear you.
No, I was just gonna like ask if they, um, had approached for like a. Um, change of premise or update or anything like that, or?
That's what I, that's what I'm meeting with.
Who's reading, okay.
To, to review their license.
Okay.
And, um, I'm concerned about what Nick said about that there's supposed to be an event there tomorrow.
So I just, I just got a text from one of the board members who says that they do not have an event scheduled for tomorrow. He doesn't know. What, what that's about.
If, look, if you could go, um, the Endless Summer, which is the name of it, so because I could search it. Uh, it comes up as a Young Men's Club event, but when you click on the ticket. On Eventbrite, so if this is, if it's not a Young Men's Club event, it might not even be. But when you click on, on Eventbrite, Young Men's Club, Endless Summer, it comes up and is an event that's happening. It's a EDM music festival happening. In Amherst. Um, and I've not been able to locate anything on their Facebook page at all for an event on, at there tomorrow or Friday.
Oh. Yeah, it's.
One thirty-eight East Street.
Yeah, it says it.
It doesn't say anything about him. I'm starting getting very annoyed because the speech I started out this meeting with.
But there is no event tomorrow.
It doesn't sound like any, the board is taking this matter very seriously.
I disagree with you, Nick.
Sense of reliability.
I think we're trying to work with everybody, Nick.
Why work with them, Joyce?
Why? Let me, let me give you an example because right now, just wait a minute. Okay. So right now they are allowing, they do a lot of things for the town of Hadley besides. They, they're now letting the school department use their fields over there for J V and younger. Parker Rec is using them for soccer. They're, they're maintaining their fields, they're marking the fields and they're allowing them for no fee at all, no charge.
So this.
And they've done that for enough, forever, Nick, forever.
This allows them to break the rules?
I'm not saying that, no, but I'm just saying that we're trying.
They're breaking the rule. We know that. How many times do you have to tell them letters going back and forth, start of July fifth? How many times you have to write a letter and say you're violating your liquor license? Now down even saying, we didn't know. Well, all these letters started July fifth, all the way through August. He didn't say once, but he didn't know that they couldn't serve alcohol. They don't know what their own liquor license says. I don't accept that. Respectfully, I'm very disappointed that this board is taking such a lax approach. To this very serious, it could be serious problem.
We have to go with litigation. We don't go in ramrodding.
We know that they've been violating your license for years. You know it.
You've been there yourself, Nick. You've been there yourself. Oh, now.
Don't look a bit out of control, Mike.
Now.
Maybe Talia.
Yeah, green thing that was the wrong thing to do, I understand that. And they, they didn't have all these concerts back in the day.
No, you knew it before, that all we wanted to do was make money, money, money.
Point of order.
One is the violation of the liquor license. And also they violated the original agreement on zoning, what they were allowed to do. So these events are far inaccessible, the zoning board committed a lawful.
We, we are.
Of that also?
We're aware of all that, we're trying to deal with it and if something, hang on, hang on.
I can deal with.
If, hang on, hang on. If there's an event there tomorrow, like you're talking about, it's gonna be a whole different animal than it it is tonight. I'll guarantee you that.
Yeah, I guess that, that was the question, I just wanted to, to pose. So, so I'm gonna repeat what I'm hearing. Um, obviously, it's extremely disconserving if indeed they were serving alcohol on the deck. It sounds like the complication is, the complication from, from taking immediate action tonight. Relative to that issue is that we've been advised by council and also the ABCC. That unfortunately, we're finding ourselves with no um, you know, teeth to, to get at it. So now we have to do this enforcement officer thing, which sounds like everybody's completely on, on board with. But then, second to the point that Mike was just making, I was also gonna ask. We were crystal clear at that last meeting that they weren't to have any events that they wouldn't be properly licensed for.
And they knew the October one.
At that time, there was Oktoberfest and then I, somebody else had, that's not here tonight, had made me aware that there might be something happening in September. So it sounds like we've got an issue where, you know, once something's out into the ether, uh, sometimes it's hard to get it out of there. So there's some remnants of plans that they likely were had in the works. But my understanding at the moment is that we don't have any evidence that there is anything occurring between now and November first. Which was when we had extended it. So to Randy's point, I think I will go on record saying it, if in fact they are having anything that's going to violate. Their zoning and potentially liquor license, then that would be something that we would need to act on. Like immediately and then my question about that is how, how would we actually go about doing that, right?
You have to reopen the public hearing, you have to notify.
I assume there's an affidavit of the Young Men's Club that's basically cease and desist or anything outside of their current licenses? Is that correct?
It didn't take the form of an affidavit, but at the, at the hearing that we opened, we had an agreement with them. Um, that their counsel, but and you heard it, I mean, so they, their counsel represented that they would be fully compliant. With their licensing um, between now and when the hearing was continued.
Including their zoning.
Uh, yeah, because that has a bearing on the licensing, what their, what an allowable use for the property is, right? That's my understanding.
Well, I'm just asking if there is, since you are the authority. Have you recorded with them that position other than a verbal statement with the attorney?
Uh, just the letters that were sent, Carolyn, right?
Yeah, and several in those.
So, so they're asking to rent the communication.
And everything was, the meetings are all recorded, so it's not like it's, was done in the back room and.
Six minutes in the back room were just asking. It's recorded, didn't answer.
Yeah.
So hypothetically. What would the young men's have, the young men's still have to do right now? Not only violate everything they have, like even doing, but no one is doing any action here. What would they really have to do before or take some action against them? Have somebody failing her leaving one of these events? Having somebody not failing, but severely injured, what's it gonna take?
But there's no evidence of an event is the problem that we have right now, Nick. Wh- which we're addressing through this hearings.
I took a picture and I can't be using information because I'm the wrong person. I, I'm gonna talk to other cities in town. I'm sure they don't have all this information, you know, saying you gotta have special police officers. You violate your liquor license, once, twice, three times, you're out.
I'm pretty sure Northampton, Amherst, Hampton all have an enforcement officer.
Yeah, we just don't have one, right?
And if you think, if you think about it, the technology that's out there today, and I'm not suggesting you would do this. Somebody could take a picture and embellish it. And it makes it, make it look like, yeah, this is the real deal. So that's the problem that we are, we. But that's why we have to have the enforcement officer. I hope not, I hope not. I have, we're, we're.
So as a resident, we was treated similar to a noise vibration. Is that correct? Meaning if we know there's a vibration, that's the noise, never complain. The police department is little enforcement facility by the bylaws. We violate the police department, we inaggress sincerely number. As the police department, we believe there's a violation in the process. The police respond to it. I assume the same would take place if you thought, nothing on hunting for a liquor violation. But the same will take place if there's a liquor violation.
I mean, kind of, but we don't have a officer right now, yeah.
Yeah, that's the way it would go.
Yeah.
Once the liquor enforcement officer. To speed.
Yep.
And we know it's Officer John Doe. We still go, we notify the police department. They run an address and serial number and then the police department will respond accordingly.
Yeah.
And I think to answer Jennifer's question previously posed, secondary question is, I do think that as a logical next step. We are gonna wanna have rules and regulations that we fall, I know, in terms of the enforcement side of it.
Right.
So that's completely, I mean, that part is completely up to you, you can decide if you want, if you want the enforcement officers to be able to take certain actions. On the spot or if you would prefer Jennifer's approach and that. They, you know, would issue notice and bring the, the people, the violator back in front of the board.
Yeah.
I think that's the most appropriate.
I would suggest you afford the officer.
Can't.
Safety.
Can't.
To take immediate.
It doesn't, yeah, if it is life safety, yes, but we can, yeah.
So, well, I think that we're getting really deep into the weeds with.
Yeah.
That officer, so I think, yeah, let us do our homework, work with my, bring back some recommendations for you. You could certainly reassure, if there's any public safety issue, they can, we should respond. And if they observe something, they report back to us.
I know we would love everything to just go away tomorrow, but unfortunately, like, it doesn't quite work that way.
Right, the policies. You said you want small policies, right? Sounds like you don't have a really liquor license policy, like after you violate this, this is what you do. You violate this and if we're gonna, you know, Thomas on having her policy. And monitoring liquor licensing, is that correct?
Jennifer? The town has called that A E O C.
The town of Hadley have its own policy.
No, no, as many of the town policies we call it a state guideline. Um, Madam Chair, I'm gonna ask if we could very quickly call a recess. We're gonna, we're gonna loop the connection with forced reboot on the computer.
So the state policy.
Hang on, sorry, we have to stop talking right now. Yes, you may do that. We're just calling a recess because this meeting has gone for so long, we need to reboot everything. So we need to stop, everyone needs to stop talking until that we are able to reboot. So do we have any further discussion for ourselves on this? The, the Young Men's Club?
No, I think we've, we've given the chief um, direct, the police chief.
And Jennifer.
And Jennifer, direction.
Uh, direction on.
On how to move forward.
That will be at the next meeting, so we're moving it along.
Okay.
Not asked, but yes.
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 Yep, okay.
September twenty eighth, I will have um, I'll have, I'll have all the information gathered for y'all to to review and make choices.
Okay.
Okay.
I have another update also, um, any licensing or anything like that at that point too.
Yes, the, the A E O officer would be just, it would not be supposed to go through the court, the Young Men's Club, it would be put account.
Correct.
Okay, and Jane, do you have anything else? No, okay. All right, so we have our direction, we know what we're doing, it's also gonna be on the next meeting. Okay. New business.
Fire department review.
Fire department review of a one-day liquor license. For uh, top of campus McGurk Hospitality and Concourse concessions.
We're passing over that?
We already did that one, did we?
Yeah, this is the quality.
This is for.
Yeah, the, the uh, item says that Chief Spankable will review the fire department requirements.
And so that's, yeah, so that's for this coming Saturday, the twenty-third, the thirtieth, October seventh and November fourth.
For the fire requirement.
Okay.
So they'll have to still notify you.
Do you get that done, okay?
For that license to be issued.
We did five point, uh, we did six point two.
Yeah, correct.
Um, six point three ambulance contracts. Night.
Good night.
Thank you for coming.
May you, may you have a very quiet weekend.
I think you will, I see it in the gods. I call your house. Let me give you yours myself, I answer that all the time, Frank. I can give it to you, dear.
All right.
Go for it, Mike.
That's, in your court, I, you guys have reviewed the ambulance contract that was sent out with the attachments, the exhibits.
Yeah.
Uh, I went over the major changes, um, the contract is a big one. They decreased our contract to a hundred and eighty thousand this year from two hundred ninety-nine four. Uh, that's for, so for fiscal year twenty-four and then we have the option of an additional year if we'd like. Uh, they also did a updated payment term, which you can see, so you are still eligible to earn back that entire subsidy. Based upon their examples, they kind of gave you an example of what their milestones are that they have to meet to hit that. Um, and again, this year, we did receive back our whole two hundred ninety-nine four forty subsidy. So if you have any questions, uh, I think I incorporated everything that we had discussed in multiple meetings, along with oversight reviewing it. Uh, so I would request, uh, Mike Warwanka, the president and CEO of uh, Action has reviewed it. He's been more than accommodating for us, for us, even offering to help with our transition to our own. Uh, emergency medical dispatching and also for billing when we are basically his own service into, into, into service.
I'll make a motion to accept the ambulance action ambulance contract of the town of Hadley.
Second.
Motion by Joey, seconded by Randy, any further discussion? Okay, none, uh, roll call vote please.
Roll call vote, Pegan?
Yes.
Tendela?
Yes.
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 And then it's been.
Okay.
You should have the original to sign and if you could get that to me and I will make sure uh, Mike Warwanka gets.
Okay, and I think. And I think we're, we're skipping six point four?
No, I can.
We're still doing it, okay.
The choice there, but I'm gonna try to speak on his behalf, but if I miss something, um, um, type in. So at the annual town meeting of last year, uh, the town supported the uh, addition of. And use coordinator to help out four departments and some conservation, planning, CPA. And Z B A, some administrative assistants. And um, so we have got that, Troy did a lot of work, got some comparison job descriptions. And so we are really moving forward with any new job description that we put together, that the select board would have time to review it and vote on it. If they had any questions about it to do that.
How are his hours gonna be divided up? I see, you know, what your percentage is. Is it going to be, who needs the most help that week?
So it's going to be, obviously, the CPA is good, is gonna be, um, I'm gonna call it seasonal. Uh, August, they're busy, beginning of September and then um, late winter, they're busy. Um, so that will be where a lot of the support. Uh, the majority of it is with conservation, but then split equally in Troy, if I'm saying this wrong, it's gonna be equally split up. And then CPA, so now obviously in our, in, in, I'm sorry, in a forty-hour, forty-hour week. Um, the position is not going to be consistent every single week.
This is thirty-five hours, right?
There, I'm sorry, thirty-five hours, this is the best way to present it, and Troy, I saw you just. One, do you have anything to add to that?
Uh, nothing other than it's uh, combined with the conservation uh, agent's position, so it's fifty-one percent. Uh, conservation agent and forty-nine percent to the land use coordinator. And we have had all the chairs of the respective boards and committees. Uh, provide their input and review the job description as well to this point.
Do we have a price tag on this yet?
Well, it was in the budget, so I have to look at it.
Okay. Motion to accept the. Um, position of land use uh, coordinator.
Second.
Motion by Joyce, seconded by Molly. Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Roll call vote, Pegan?
Yes.
Tendela?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Isar?
Yes.
And then it's been.
Yes.
Sorry, I should have done six point five while Mike was still sitting up here.
That you, Mike.
Firefighter vacancy.
He can handle the big walk.
And. All six steps.
So um, I'm here tonight to make a request, uh, as a result of the decrease in the FY twenty-four contract rate of action. Uh, having a discussion with Carolyn, Linda and all members of the ambulance oversight committee. Uh, I'm requesting one additional firefighter to be hired so we can actually truly go to a twenty-four seven. Uh, full-time fire department. Department can actually present fire calls and second overnight. Does not give us little things that. Uh, the, the budget for the ambulance was budgeted for two hundred ninety-nine four forty. So that position would be made part of that, uh, that. That line item, basically, um. The estimate with all the, with overtime, uh, E M T stipend. I, right now, they're on a four-on-four-off, so using those numbers, a four-on-four-off schedule. Uh, I have to budget up to forty-eight hours uh, under F L S A for that. Uh, it's approximately about sixty-five thousand dollars for that employee. That includes their E M T stipend, clothing allowance, uh, their rate is twenty-two, thirty-two an hour. That's the step one of that firefighter E M T. Um, so I'm making that request, it would be a huge step for the town of Hadley and we still have the safer grant. And I don't know what point they're at in the review, or if they've even started that process. We're just getting a little bit ahead of that. Um, this would be that the the the, all the members of the department are. Hoping that you will uh, be willing to support that, we do have the funding uh, for it. Uh. Just some concerns that you're aware why it's also a help to us, my deputy chief is currently out with an injury. Uh, and we're trying to start to send some of our members to the academy. I also have one firefighter that very, may very well be deployed in the next six months, for up to a year overseas. Uh, so we kind of need the spent strength to be able to maintain. So I'm asking for your support in it, and we currently have, uh, we're in the process of hiring the one that was approved in the twenty four budget. So we would just be pulling two out of that pool, uh, the H R director, Troy has, he has, uh, we have eight folks that have applied for the. One position, and we would pull two out of that.
Wow, that's pretty good, eight.
Then can I just ask Carolyn, um, in the meetings that you've had with Chief Spankable, were there any concerns that were raised?
As far as this position, no, I I'm I'm actually more concerned about the welfare of the remaining employees right now, what's critical. Um, and it was, it's just really truly a blessing that that it's gonna fit within that budget, so it's not gonna be in competition next year, um. And uh. You can keep low. And you can share too, we did get the license for the ambulance, so that's ready, we've got a few more things he's gotta do, but.
We actually just received our our medications license. And so we will be picking up our medications for our ambulance, we are now just waiting for numbers for, it's amazing the amount of numbers you need to go to the next step. Uh, so our matrix numbers, which is some type of reporting system uh, through the state for our, you know, for. Uh, when we respond to a call, uh, and then. Uh, we're 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 ready, our folks are actually training with Action right now, so we're riding the third. Uh, some of our members have already made four runs with with Action um, to the hospital to get used to this. So we're working diligently on that, and I can tell you all our guys are chomping at the bit to to get this started, so. We're pot committed, and again, it's just, it's been a struggle getting everything, uh, getting everything done, but it's been a real. Team effort, including action to help us with the billing side of it. So, and again, just remember, we also received back our full subsidy for that you will be getting back this year.
Yeah.
And the hope is to talk with the financial team on how we're gonna deploy that.
And just, um, so the rest of the board knows too, with the conversations with Action, um, through the ambulance oversight committee. Um, basically, we're back up to pre pandemic. Numbers, the call, call volume is not going down, um, if anything, and this is widespread, right, um, what. Most municipalities are seeing is their call volume is actually eking up there, and Hadley is absolutely no exception.
Mm hmm.
So I think. You know, from my standpoint, a concern I would have is, is there any? Stress tests that we need to do on on that action contract, could it go in the wrong direction, and it seems? Pretty solid, so doing this right now.
Mm hmm.
Just seems like perfect timing.
Okay, motion to approve the requested firefighter position, second.
Motion by Randy, seconded by Joyce, any further discussion?
This has been my life dream.
Roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote, Keegan?
Yes.
Chandler?
Yes.
Carson?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, and from the department, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go get those hires.
Oh, just uh, FY, there is an uptake in COVID, so, you know, people should be monitoring what they're doing.
Yes, thank you.
Hmm. All right, any other uh, items anticipated? Nope, great, okay, town administrator report, sorry.
Save this every time. Where, like, I thought I should go to the beginning of it, but um, just a reminder of October fourteenth is the uh. The DPW open house, uh, we are working now with Lauren Trombley, Scott and I, who is a phenomenal event planner, you can find money anywhere. Um, to help us fund that, it's gonna be refreshments, hot dogs, and hamburgers, and we're looking to even combine it with another entity, so. But I haven't really told the DPW if he's doing this yet, so we're gonna work on some recommendations for that. Uh, I'm just skipping through here, I know Mike's still here, fiber had a little bit of a glitch, um, but you found a solution that was.
I just see him, yes.
Okay, all right, great, um.
Actually, could I just say, well, he actually just went live in the library there. Where it was. And in terms of that access, I'm in the library. Door, you know, in. X basis.
That's great, thank you, you added to my report. Um, the classification conversation succession, Troy did give the column center a little nudge today. Uh, because it's not going as quite as quickly as we would like to, so um, um. It's looking forward to Troy being back nice and healthy next week. Uh, special town meeting, I'm just trying to go through this, anything I put in red is an update. Uh, the copies and printers have been installed in in an archaic, somewhat of an archaic electrical system, there did need to have some updates. Done to support those, but um, Gary Berg's on top of that. Uh, so it's away solar, we are exploring some other options that we have just discovered that some municipalities are using to get solar, so we'll keep you updated on that. Town Hall uh, columns, we met today with the architect, the firm, Gary, Jen- Jennifer, myself. Uh, just to make sure, um, any concerns, you know, because we did have a problem the last time, so it looks like that's gonna be moving forward sooner than later. Um, in the next two weeks, and Jennifer and I are working on some things, we want to do to make sure. Um, H R is involved, Troy with some of the impact of having, you know, chemicals being used and stuff like that, but we will. Keep you updated on that, the Russell School reduces feasibility study, we had twenty six firms request proposals, which I'm not sure, I've never been a part of a procurement that had that many. So that's, that's moving along. And uh, Shane can pipe in, I don't know whether she, if she has anything to add, but on the twenty third and the twenty fourth, um, it was very dedicated to levy. Um, the the levy we have in resiliency, uh. Study that we're working on with Woodard and Curran, and as well as the Hadley Blood Risk Management Outreach Project, we met with a lot of stakeholders, uh, FEMA, NEMA. Um, there's so, there's so many acronyms, I I can't even keep track of them, but it was all hands on deck, just talking about moving forward to this massive. Pro uh, recon- either a reconstruction or just a repair. That won't happen for many years, but we're building up with that, and the good thing is, uh, Senator Commerford was there as well, Representative Carey, and they are totally on board, totally committed. To helping us in the future to help fund this massive project. And uh, we are gonna apply for any compassion, for some budget and H R software. And um, I know there was a request when I wasn't here about getting some legal updates, I will have that for the next meeting, some of it will be. An open session, but through the confidentiality and possible limitations, that's probably gonna be an executive session, so you are gonna see some executive sessions in the next. Few, few, probably few months, so. That's what I have for you, fine.
Okay. All right, are there any uh, items for future discussion that we haven't already talked about this evening to go on the next agenda?
Just the ones from. Before, that we still haven't talked about.
Mm hmm. Um, any liaison reports? Okay. All right, so we need to.
You let Joyce through her.
Oh, sorry, announcements?
Of course I have that. Every couple of weeks we do have some. Uh, people that have passed, um, we have Joanna Paddock, who was a Waskevich, sister of Bernice Baronowski. So our condolences to Bernice and um, to Waskevich family. Um, David Koloski, um, he was a Hopkins Academy grad of nineteen sixty four, he passed away. I believe in Minnesota. I think that's where he was, um, I'm kind of thinking his dad was the uh, police chief.
He was.
Koloski.
Yeah.
So that was many moons ago, but I've been around many moons, so.
Yeah.
David, uh, our condolences to uh, any relatives of David's, and then we also had the passing of Peter Skip Nabala, um. A young gentleman, uh, certainly passed too soon, so our condolences to his wife and. Uh, brothers and sisters, um, and his daughters, so our condolences to, to them. That's it, that's all I got.
Any other announcements?
Chicken to go? For the uh, Legion, I think it's uh, September twenty fourth. Anybody wants to get tickets, I think, uh.
Did I need to chicken to carry?
Chicken to go.
I did, I did.
I think the seat, uh, the chickens could be picked up at twelve and four, I think Denise Devine has some. Tickets that I'm sure other people at the Legion do also.
And I think. Okay.
I have an announcement.
Announcement? Yeah?
There's an Eddie Forman concert will be Sunday, October eighth, there's a fundraiser for the Friends of the Council on Aging. Tickets available at Town Hall or in the collector's office or at the Council on Aging.
Is that an inside or outside event?
Weather permitting, outside.
Okay.
I have a whole lot of roof down here.
Look like, shoot like.
Okay, um. So I'm gonna make a motion now, um, we're gonna adjourn and move into executive session. Um, moving from open meeting to executive session. Um. So the select board will hold an executive session for the following purposes, per M G L, chapter thirty, section uh, thirty A, sections twenty one. Um, A. To conduct strategy sessions in preparations for negotiations with non-union personnel, um. Human resources and per M G L, chapter thirty A, section twenty one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining agreements. Uh, to um, with respect to collective bargaining. As well as negotiations with non-union personnel, D P W director. Um, also for contract negotiations with non-union personnel, fire chief, and for, um. Discuss strategy with potential litigation. Um, for police, uh, um, with police department. Uh, not to reconvene in open session, um, and we have, uh. To discuss the strategy with respect to, um, open meeting may have a detrimental effect. On the bargaining position of the public body.
Second.
Oh, I need to also say that it is for the U P S E U local. Uh, four twenty four, um, unit one twenty nine municipal employees and the U P S E U local four twenty four unit supervisors' union.
Right.
And we will not reconvene in open session, which I think I said that before, okay. Sorry, that was a mouthful, but that was a lot.
I see what I did to you there.
It's okay.
Chandler? Yes. Parsons?
Yes.
Iser?
Yes.
And then we'll say.
Yes.